And also around the room, introduce ourselves. And if you are representing a group or an individual, or if you're a staff or whatever, if you please identify yourself, I'll start and then we'll go around the room. My name is Connie DeGna, I'm the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thanks, Edie. I am the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sally Kusko, Girl Eckers, here to help the planning.
Jim Ferguson, I am on the planning.
Congratulations.
Derek Parks, Vice Chair of Commission.
Tom Davis, responsible for planning division.
I'm Darrell Anzon, I'm a concerned citizen and a vice chairman for Spinard for the Alaska Republican Party.
My name is Steve Doobie, I am also a concerned citizen, a member of the Alaska Republican Party District 13.
Bruce Phelps,规划部的执行官.
And Al?
Al Barrett, Planning Department.
Jill Annie Wood, Planning Department.
Jim Sawhill, Lowesbury and Associates.
Evan Rolland, Home Builder.
Dan Coffey, Consultant.
Mike Kenny with River Creek Community Council and Halo.
And Dana, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Dana Bruce.
Okay.
Carol, um, please.
It's June.
It's June.
Oh, I'm John McLaughlin, I'm with your tax community council and a interested citizen.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Phelps has asked if we could deal with non-conformities first. He has come to the commission even though he's ill, he's done a lot of work on the non-conformity chapter 12 issue. And so at this particular point in time, if we can change our little procedures and go to chapter 12, non-conformities, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam Chairman, for the change in the agenda, I appreciate that. And I'm just going to be here for non-conformities this evening, I'm at the back of the house. When I was looking at the non-conformity chapter, and you should all have received it, handout that looks like this, it's like one page, it's got a number of items on it, and...
Does everyone have that over a couple extras?
Looks like this.
I have it. I have it. I've got my own.
So, what I, I'm not sure if people can hear me, but it's the best I can do, okay? When I review the non-conformity chapter, generally speaking, it seemed to be pretty much okay. The part that I was concerned with is basically the renovation of existing structures, particularly interior and certain structural aspects. And so what you're going to find when you go through these various changes is dealing with that particular aspect to allow something to occur that I think is appropriate. And there's kind of a fine line between not wanting to have a non-conformity increase in amount in terms of site area and structure area, but still allowing for interior remodeling and interior improvement to occur such that you don't have a degraded structure, because you don't want a degraded structure either. So it's this balancing process that you're going through. And the first one basically says, repairs or maintenance of non-conformities that are required to keep in ING only, keep, structures or sites in a safe condition are permitted, provided that the repair or maintenance does not include the extent or does not extend the non-conformity. It does not, excuse me, does not increase, it should be increase.
Yeah.
So it does not increase the extent of non-conformity. I can't add too much to that, actually.
Is this section 12, 12-010-F?
Yeah, it's F1, that's what I have, yeah. And this section does continue, it's just I haven't put all the language in here.
Okay, so as I understand it, Bruce, repairs or maintenance of non-conformities that are required to keep structures and sites in a safe condition are permitted, provided that the repair or maintenance does not increase the extent of the non-conformity.
That's right, yeah.
Okay?
I'm confused, isn't that what it's, isn't that what it says written?
I'm sorry, what?
That's what's in the provision, provisionally adapted.
Oh, well, in that case, I was looking at old section, then. It could be.
Exactly as written, so I think you could.
Okay, sorry.
And I would add, and I likewise would...
Okay. Well, maybe more of these. 21-12-010-F2, which is new subsection, and Sally, correct me if I'm wrong here, okay? Repairs that are necessary to maintain and to correct any damage or deterioration to structure, soundness of interior, exterior appearance of building or structure without expanding or altering the building or structures. Again, it's a repair type of relationship issue. Does that exist now?
No.
Yeah, it does, it's A, it's 1A. Instead of F2, it's 1A.
So that's in there now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's make it very quickly this evening. I don't know where I was getting it from. 21-12-030-D1, small d, I have changed to use that has been discontinued, has been vacant or inactive for a continuous period of at least one year, unless the building official determines that the owner of the property or structure is actively making efforts to continue the use that has been affected by adverse market conditions.
I think right now it's two years. Isn't it under the current code, two years?
I don't know if it is.
I don't know how long it is, is it two years?
Sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Okay, um, do you see the printout that we're looking at right now?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the 21-12-030-D1D, aren't we right now at two years in order to...
I believe it's 18 months.
Is it? Okay, I knew it was...
It's 18 months?
It says it needs one year.
The provisional adopted code has one year.
Has one year, yeah. It's on page 562, 562, line 6.
Okay.
Um, other party is, uh, can demonstrate...
What this does, Bruce, is if I own a building, a restaurant, and it's empty because of the current market conditions.
Right.
And it's non-conforming as a restaurant.
Right.
But I can't do anything with it because of the market, this would allow me to keep it as non-conforming because of adverse market conditions.
Right, but you have to also be making an act of attempt to do something with it.
Okay. Having a current lease agreement agreement would be an act, would be approval of an act of intent.
I mean, I'm not the building official making the interpretation, the building official has to do that, but, you know, generally, yes.
It would be beneficial if it were a little more specific, I think, so that there was less discretion on the part of the building official, unless the building is in a permanent period of at least one year.
How would you want to make it more precise?
And the owner has, can demonstrate that the property or structure is actively marketed.
That works for me.
Okay.
Trying to read that back.
All right, the use has been discontinued, has been vacant or inactive for a continuous period of at least one year, and the owner can demonstrate the property or structures is actively, has been, has been affected by adverse market conditions. So it puts the burden, but it puts the burden on the owner to demonstrate that, but it leaves out the building official determinants.
The only thing I'd be concerned about is, I think, if you delete it out, make it efforts to continue the use. I think, I think trying to make...
That's appropriate, yeah.
Okay, that's a reasonable thing to require of the individual.
Okay.
The next one is a new subsection, and Sally, correct me here, okay? Tenant improvements or renovations within existing structure shall not, the word "not" is not there, shall not be considered an enlargement or alteration as described in the previous subsection. So basically, what this is saying is that if you have a tenant and he needs to make the required improvement, that basically, that's allowed, it's an interior type of improvement. It gets to the philosophy of, you don't really want the structure to be degraded over time, but you want to add some improvement allowed, but you don't increase the amount of structural change or site change. So this is kind of like allowing the tenant to do something inside this structure.
And basically grandfather's the non-conformity for a definite period of time.
Well, yeah, I mean, what it does is like, basically allows them to make alterations and improvements, okay? And that's not clear now.
So are you saying "shall" or "shall not"?
Shall not.
Okay, so "not" is missing.
So it's, it allows it, but it's a negative, yeah. I'm married to an attorney, what can I say?
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Is everyone like that?
This next one is in code right now, and to a very large degree, and again, Sally,
help me here, okay? It basically says, a person wishing to replicate that a non-conforming structure has been damaged or destroyed to the extent of more than 50% of replacement cost of time of destruction, shall be able to replicate the structure according to either of the two methods that are identified now in the existing, or the proposed code, should I say? And this one is basically allowing the individual can come back and replace it, but not to any greater extent than existed before the United...
What sort of order, Madam Chair?
Yes?
That's essentially a variance that you'd be granting, to build back on the same footprint with the same non-conforming approachments and so forth. It's like the plan permission took that into consideration.
The way that provisional adopted code says, it has the same start, but then it says that the applicant should choose one of the two application, other than that list. Which requires...
Yeah, I'm just using the language in the existing code, basically, professionally adopted code.
I think there is a difference substantively, it "shall be able to replicate the structure", sounds like the approval's already been granted, is that the intent of the provisional adopted language to...
Yeah, that's the intent.
Certain person wishing to replicate, that's the first part.
And it says, "shall choose one of the two ways below", which certainly says, he can do it, but you've got to do it by one of the two ways.
Right, that's the idea.
Right.
And you're just adding clarification.
Yeah, that's what I thought I was doing.
Okay, it's a contained clarification.
Okay.
The next one is the, basically, the appeal. The appeal now goes to provisional code, Urban Design Commission, it really should go to ZBAE, it's something more appeals than examiners, this is what I feel strongly about.
I don't have a problem with that, does anyone else have a problem with that? Okay.
The next one is something that I derived from Mr. Coffey's report, and I'm bringing it here because I don't have the same expertise as some of you guys do, okay? And so what the recommendation was, is that the portion of the total project costs that relate to increases in conformity shall be credited toward percentages identified in two subsections. So you have to look at the subsections, but basically what's happening is that a person is increasing the amount, or decreasing the amount of non-conformity, trying to bring performance that's being credited toward the other requirements that require percentages as well, too. So it's facilitating it, or at least that's the intent.
So does this mean if through their renovations or their expansion, that, for example, their building facade adds some requirement required by a building design standard, that that automatically counts? Is that what that's intended to be?
If there's costs that are incurred for decreasing non-conformity, that proportion of cost counts toward the other requirements, yeah.
Okay.
It's provided...
Yes.
Different question on the same paragraph.
All right.
Yes. We answered Bruce's question.
Have we answered your question satisfactorily?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Paragraph C1B, this is on page 568, line 19, 2.5% of the assessed value of a piece of property, 2.5%, awful small number. For example, let's assume a $200,000 home, which, you don't count land costs, so this is probably somewhere around an average home, 2.5% of $200,000 is $5,000 bucks. And so we want the applicant to spend 10%. So 10% of $5,000 would be $500. That's an awful, awful, small threshold to start getting everybody's concern. I would like to see the 2.5% go to 25%, so that it becomes meaningful, and that in turn, the 10% becomes something that the director and everybody can deal with. I mean, if you take the 2.5%, gives you a $5,000 value, 10% of that's $500 bucks, what's $500 going to buy somebody in moving towards getting rid of a non-conformity? It's an awful small amount of money. We don't need to spend the director's time and everybody else's time trying to figure out how we're going to spend $500, because I don't know what you would do...
So you would go to the other subsection that identifies the amount and change that?
Yeah, 2.5% just change it to 25%. And that takes care of the larger projects where we would generate, I mean, 25%, $200,000 home, that's a $50,000 improvement, 10% of that is $500, and you maybe spend, do something with the $5,000. The 2.5%, we don't need our director worrying about $500.
Yeah, I took the existing professionally adopted code because that's what people have labored over before, and I do not have the same expertise as you do in this particular area. So if, if your feeling is that it should be a greater amount, I'm going to leave it over to other commission members that have more expertise in this area.
I'm not changing the 10%, I'm just changing the number where it starts at.
Yeah, I understand.
Commissioner Dean, this is your area of expertise?
This is a tough one. It is, because I just think, you know, $5,000, $500, you know, what are you going to buy for $5,000 dollars? You know, a couple windows in a door, it's not like a huge amount that you're going to be able to do with, you know, $5,000. $500 bucks is, you know, maybe going to get you a new front door. I mean, it's not like it's...
But I mean...
But not small, but not small.
Well, it'll get you a door.
And I didn't think our director ought to try to tell somebody else to spend $500.
Right. I can see your point.
But the question is, what is the percentage?
Yeah. 25% can add up, though, if it's a million dollar building, let's say it's a sixplex or an eightplex, all of a sudden, you know, it's a bigger, a lot bigger of a number.
But you're still, you're a million dollars, you're $200,000, 10% is $25,000. And I mean, all we're doing is saying, at what threshold do we start moving towards requiring money to be spent, towards eliminating the non-conformity?
But what if it's the building itself, it's on the setback, or some other, you know, issue that's majoring, it's the whole structure, and there's not much you can do about?
I couldn't answer that question. I don't know what happens today, if, you know, how the director would handle that.
Yeah. I don't know, ask Jerry, he's right there.
Does the director want to weigh in on this discussion?
You know, the percentage is to be reasonable, so I want this to be reasonable.
Does anyone who deals with this issue on a regular basis have any comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I do deal with the non-conformity on a daily basis. With the question, and the setback issue, buildings in the setback, right now, I think you're talking about the characteristics. So the building setback would still be grandfathered or non-conforming, but we're talking about parking and landscaping and other characteristics of use in this section.
But what if there's nowhere to go else with the parking or the landscaping? You know, it's, you know, everything inch of the lot is being used, then how do you bring it into conformity, even at $5,000? Difficult.
Should we be difficult? It just depends on the layout, there might be something.
Okay. Mr. Coffey?
I think, Jim, Mr. Ferguson is right, the trigger of the requirement is too low. At 2.5% can start you down a road with a relatively insignificant amount of money. 2.5 of a million dollar project is $25,000. So at what level you go to to start the trigger is really the key. Is it 10% or 5% or 20% or 25%? I don't know the answer, I think it's, and I don't know the consequences if we pick a different level, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
But I truly think 2.5 is, particularly if it applies to homes or single or duplex or that kind of thing, is far too low of a trigger. All multifamily, commercial, mixed-use, public, institutional, industrial development, so it could apply to multifamily, which is what, threeplex and above, I think, or so?
Yes.
I was going to say, and Mr. Coffey corrected it, that I don't think this would necessarily apply to the single-family duplex. We do have a lot of non-conforming multifamilies out there with parking and landscaping, I'll say that.
Well, we're looking for a percentage, is it...
Is it 2.5, is it 25, or is it somewhere in between? Yeah.
You know, I don't like when we do things like this.
Yeah.
Because there's no substance to it, really, it's like, what do you feel? It might be better to defer this a bit and think about it a bit more.
What it costs today is to be different 10 years.
Yeah.
Would that an example help?
Yeah, I think so.
If you do it, it should be a percentage of the...
I mean, I think the concept that it should make a difference is important, is that, I just don't know where the number is. I agree, I just don't know the number.
Well, one thing...
Change the tax rule.
Yeah, or one thing you can do is have one number, 1% up to $500,000, and another percent above, you know, $500,000. So you could say 10% at $500,000, which would be $50,000, which would be a, it could be a significant improvement on a $500,000 building, but a million dollar building is probably going to take more, which it would, you know, perhaps be 15%.
Is there any, like, the big box ordinance, does that have a trigger in terms of the degree to which we're requiring, can they do a remodel, trigger the move toward conformity at some level?
Is someone near that can answer that question regarding big box?
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
10%.
10%?
County, I'll give you your suggestions, I've got a sliding scale, but...
I think, around the sliding scale, let's establish a million dollars. I mean, if you establish a million dollars with $10,000, that does the same thing without forcing everybody to calculate. I mean, if we talk about what you do with the 10%, you just said, you know, $10,000 or more, here's what you do if you're fussing 10, you don't do anything. And I'm trying to be cognizant of the applicant's time and the director's time.
You know, the sliding scale really is not fair for different properties, you truly have a system percentage, because, matter of fact, they're non-conformity, they all have the same, they all, you know, some are just larger than others, some people have more of an economic interest on the property than others, so really, it shouldn't be fair enough to have them, you know, I think that's why you see the percentages in the code, so 10% is what's used for the box preview, if it's more than 10% of work that you're doing in there, you need to apply to basically how you're doing other conditions. Somewhere between 10 and 25% probably, but that number's arbitrary.
Well, we all agree that it's not 2.5, so, um...
I'll throw out 10.
10?
I'll throw out 10, too, because there's a base for it.
Mm-hmm, a prior consideration. Great.
What's 88? 88, 50. 88, 50.
Dana, do you have an opinion on this?
2.5 not enough.
Yeah, we all know that 2.5 is not enough, and I guess we're going to, we need something that is perhaps, that we can reference, like the big box?
Well, you know, I think there has to be some base for it, I mean, my concern is that we're picking 2.5 or 8.5% and having no basis for it, okay? And I think we're better off if we looked at the code, look at similar situations, and tried to find a number that made more sense, than just trying to pick it out of the air this evening. So perhaps staff can come back within a week or two weeks and make a recommendation to us and explain why.
Why it needs to be greater than 2.5%?
No, if they come back with a number, explain why they get that number.
Where it came from, a reference, a reference.
A reference, why.
All right, okay, so we would hopefully hear back from you next week. Thank you. All right. And Jim, you brought this issue up, thank you very much, if you can provide us with any references, that would be, that would be helpful.
I was trying to get, I'm trying to get caught up. I apologize for that.
We think you're quite courageous to join the commission at this particular juncture, so thank you for joining us.
We're all caught up in that one.
All right, okay.
The next one is a new subsection, it's existing buildings, and this is one where, "existing buildings which are constructed over a lot line on abutting lot shall be deemed to be an existing structure on a commercial tract. Such development associated structures may be enlarged so long as they comply and so forth." So basically what this is doing is recognizing that you do have structures crossing lot lines on abutting lots, and it's been a problem before, and this allows it for it to be, continue to be improved, subject to the other provisions of the title.
Is this a non-conforming characteristic, or is this not a non-conforming structure?
It would be a building, which would be a structure. Some buildings which are constructed over a lot line.
This is FYI, they covered it, Title 23, this says there's a firewall to be there for, if it came in for addition, they would commit, it would be an issue.
Okay, so we have to get, would they have to get a variance from Title 23, is that what you're saying?
Well, it would be a variance, so that's the issue.
So what you're saying is you can't do this?
They stand for existing as long as they don't apply for building permits, so I'm not sure where this came from. The ones that are existing basically continue to exist because they're not asking for any kind of consideration in any way.
So can they be enlarged, insofar as they don't increase the amount of non-conformity?
Building, then they would have to address the issue.
What may happen, is a typical discussion, is that they get pushed into a, do any replat to remove the interior outline that the building crosses, then there's a bunch of exactions that happen. exactions that happen that make the building or the site maybe not work either, because then they have to put in landscaping and reducing their parking.
All the other requirements in there.
So, the dilemma here is when you're trying to push things to conformity, you may actually be backfiring in a sense here by not allowing them an easy way out, because they may not spend any money because the exposure of doing a replat, they just want it to sit there and put bandages on it and rot, and we never do an upgrade. Whereas, if you have, the real stipulations that the fire department and building code are worried about in Title 23 is that they want to make sure that the lots aren't going to be sold separately, so that you actually have part of the building on one side of the lot that doesn't have a firewall in it. So, there should be some exceptions, that if it's a, if it's a commonly-owned building and commonly-owned lots other than a fragment lot subdivision, that you should be able to make sure that you meet the fire code requirements and that you have, and what the fire department will do is make sure that you meet the standard and that you have a common alarm system and screen close system for the entire building, so that it acts as one. And it may be a situation that if they want to do an addition to the building, in lieu of doing a replat to get rid of the common lot line, meet all the requirements, and in a deed restriction or a common development agreement that the city's part of, they sign on, says that it can be done commonly and ties the two pieces of the property together, so that they can't be sold separately.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I may. This falls under the, would fall under the non-conforming structures, is what I believe. And so, when you expand the building, if you're going to expand it where the lot line is, then that would be in violation of expanding the non-conforming structure already. Currently, we do allow additions to areas that are not in that non-conforming area, outside of the setbacks.
Mr. Coffee?
But if the only non-conformity is the fact that it's built across lot lines, then you're just, the analogy breaks down, because if it's, if that's the only thing that's non-conforming, then what Tim said makes sense. And I mean, I happen to own a, used to own a building that crossed six lot lines, or five, and it was, we didn't, never had any Title 23, but of course, then again, we never expanded it. But that was not an uncommon practice back in the days of the building.
This is one of those situations, down in Homer, they have a requirement that if you spend more than $10,000 redoing your building, it automatically pushes you into conditional use process. And it was their way to try and grab as much as they could of review. So, Safeway down there, they can't even replace half of the tile in the store for under $10,000. So, they continue to just let it rot. And it's a way that you don't encourage even good maintenance of your property. So, I caution everybody that you may try and clean everything up, but it might be a shame or something at the same time.
Jim?
Question to either Tim or Jerry. Could you vacate a lot line? Would that solve the problem?
It could, but then, then the possibilities of exactions comes into play. But we're looking at many of these right now, at that people are putting in for additions, the property is cross, buildings cross property law, and we are accommodating them through the building permit process either by having a fire roll-down, a fire mechanism that deals with the fire separation issue, or combining the two processes together in perpetuity by deed. So, I'm not sure where this came from or what you're trying to fix, but I'm not sure it's necessary.
Well, it's trying to fix a situation where you have an existing structure on an existing lot line, which just makes it non-conforming, is my understanding.
If it's constructively, you know, probably pre-code, it certainly is legal and can stay there in perpetuity, but if they're trying for permit that deals with anything on that common line, then they'll have to address it.
Yeah, Bruce, this has been an issue that's kind of been like a metronome going back and forth. Depending on who is in charge of the building department at any certain time, has been a requirement, or the fire marshal office has been a requirement as to whether or not they press for a replat or not. Because right now, under the code, the only way to vacate a lot line in our city, in our jurisdiction, is to actually do a replat.
Yeah, I guess that's my concern. If you have to go through a replat, you bring everything in. I mean, that, that's the exposure, and if you have that exposure, quite often you're not going to take the risk of the exposure. You just leave it the way it is.
But you can put it in here, but it doesn't change Title 23, Bruce. We need to change the fire code and the building code to get it with the issue.
Or you could amend the way that you can vacate a lot line in a case where you have a building that crosses an interior lot line.
So, and you could do it, okay, a vacation, but with a different standard in that particular instance. That's right. You would do it that way. Okay. Okay, I'm going to draw this, okay? But I think that I like the idea of vacation of a lot line and figure out a way to deal with it that way. Okay.
All right. Well, I was going to make one recommendation. If owned by a single entity, "existing buildings which are constructed over a lot line on a budding lot shall be deemed to be existing on one commercial tract."
Sure.
That's, that's what the intent is.
Yeah.
You know, which facilitates financing, avoids going to get a variance and all that sort of thing.
But that's what it says, doesn't it?
Well, in your new subsection, yes. Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's what he says you can't do.
Well, Jerry, can you figure out a way to make that work?
Well, you can do it in the code here, but it still doesn't, you know, relieve the complication of the fire to the building code. You really, you might have done it here, but you haven't done it, you know, over here. And we are working with fire to amend the code to make this clear.
Okay, then I want to put it back on then. I don't want to take it off.
Right.
So, I want to still keep it.
Right, as precedent setting. All right, all right.
But I think that we do have to follow up on the vacation aspect, and I'll figure that out later.
Okay, all right. Mr. Bowles, did you have a comment you'd like to add?
Well, we have the fragment lots under commercial tracts, which you have buildings going across property lines. They're basically for financial reasons. And in such a situation as this, I think you could do the same thing and make a provision under short plats, couldn't you, providing the ownership doesn't change, you're not doing any-
There's a lot of jurisdictions out in the world that actually allow you to vacate a lot line, an interior lot line, and they, and they don't make you do a full replat of everything. It's basically a paper dollar.
Mr. Mintz?
The, it's not always a situation where the budding lots are owned by the same person.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true. I should share a comment with Patty Wall. Okay?
Get yourself to do a replat, bud.
Okay.
Where did we end up on this? Are we leaving it in?
I prefer leave it in.
Yes, yes.
Leave it in, written, and then it'll put pressure on the other-
Because if it's not in, it's out.
Yes, to deal with it. All right. Okay, thank you very much. You had, I know you're ill, but you had some comments regarding zoning classifications.
Oh, my.
Oh, sorry, Connie, just a quick point of information. So, we, we will be providing more information from the department as to Chapter 12, responding to public comments as to, at the very top item, F1, concerns about the language being restrictive regarding making structures or sites. Required to keep structures or sites in a safe condition. So, we're looking at potentially identifying language that will not inadvertently constrain to similar, to simply allowing repairs only where it's a life safety issue.
Oh, I see. So, you're going to broaden the idea. You're going to try and define the word, that's a word in there, "safe."
Well, we'll try to figure out a solution so that this is, this is avoiding that type of-
All right, okay. So, you're going to bring that back to us now?
There'll be an issue response.
Yes.
On that, the title says maintenance repair, the first sentence says repairs and maintenance, but all the other ones, repair, 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 replacement, make, maintenance of mechanical electrical equipment, maintenance of land areas, never talks about maintenance on the building. And to me, like, a roof is a maintenance item. Now, I don't know where that falls. I know you need a relooking permit, but I don't know if that falls here or not.
Correct. That's one of the issues that we're looking at. The item F1 is sort of the overriding allowed purpose of the, of the repair. So, the purpose here is overriding purpose is required to keep structures or sites in a safe condition. So, we're first going to look at that, make sure that's not inadvertently more limiting than was intended, and then to look at the subset items underneath, so that if someone's going to repair their roof-
And I think you needed to find the word repair and the word maintenance, by the way.
We're taking a look at current code as well, see how that works today.
That repair and maintenance, those two words are going to be argued for a long time if you don't define them right now.
We are also looking at a comment as to when or if to include the cost of interior renovations when you have a characteristic of use that's not in compliance, and we hit that, whatever it is, 10% trigger or what have you, identifying what percent when or if to include the cost of the interior part of the project in the calculation of the cost of the project, where you would take 10% of the cost of the project and move it towards compliance. So, we'll be looking at that as well.
The comment about defining repairs and maintenance would be very, very commensurate with that. I mean, that-
That's critical.
We're going to go into more, we'll fill some more what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Where does the word replace come in?
I don't know. But some of these definitions are critical, and you need to find them now, and you may have to make it specific to this particular chapter, too.
Yeah. Repair a roof, replace a roof, do, repair the siding or replace it, repair the window or replace it.
And you need to define it now, because otherwise you've got a real problem.
IRS has those clean questions on those two particular issues.
Actually, that was my last comment on this section.
Are we speaking from experience, Jerry?
There's some words in here that need to be defined very carefully, and the words I have are repair, maintenance, but there may be others as well, too, that are going to be argued about in the future. So, now is the time to think about that.
Do we have any other comments on Chapter 12? Yes?
I have three, if I may.
Okay.
Probably three. Page 559, reference to 21.03, page 260, verification of non-conforming status. I don't believe that's a correct citation. And I don't know, maybe the citation is going to be corrected automatically, but I tried to find that today, and I could not find it. So, if somebody please check and make sure that's the correct citation. I'm in the process of listening to all the public testimony that this place backed in March as directed by our Madam Chair, and a major concern, I hear, is, is this issue. And I would like to ask the question, if it's improper, I apologize, but is there a way that we could make handling the non-conformities easier for the first two years? We have a whole bunch of public out there that do not understand Title 21. I would guess 98% of the people, including some of the commissioners I see, are challenged by Title 21. And I am concerned that we're doing something here that's going to impact everybody. And I would like to try to minimize that impact. I really would. And one way would be is if we could have no cost to, you know, to our applicants for the first two years, if you have a non-conformity caused by this rewrite, can we waive the fee for two years? I would, I'm doing that because, one, I'm hoping it gets the people in to get it taken care of in two years. But I don't know if it's even appropriate or if it's beyond the purview of this group. But this scares me, because I've got, there's people out there that are fat, dumb, and happy, and we're going to make this property non-conforming. And I'd like to do what we can to try not to be rather than get that done.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
The problem, this is my perception, but my perception is that the problem is not so much in this chapter as in the other chapters, the zoning districts, and the uses and the like. And that's where you're going to find the new requirements that will create non-conformities.
I agree with you. They're created in other chapters, absolutely. But they come roost, they come home to roost right here. I mean, it just, I'm just trying to make it easier for everybody when they have a non-conformity. I mean, it's a little hard to say, we sat back, we changed the rules, and now would you come pay us, I don't know what the fee is, I'm going to say 250 bucks or so for us to process it. I'm afraid there's a lot of people that would get upset with the counter people at that point.
You know, not that I just, you know, I don't agree, it's that the non-conformity issue is going to be over time, over 20 years from the commitment for the financing, and it's not going to be just the first two years. It's going to be over a long period of time.
I agree with you there, but if I can help by taking, doing it over 20 years would probably be an inappropriate use of the city's money, in my opinion. And I'm arbitrarily saying two years.
I think that, you know, well, first of all, one of the first threshold issues is whether we wish to create the non-conformities that are being created by the new Title 41. We actually have not addressed that issue yet.
No.
Okay? And that is a major issue that we have to address. And so, when we go through the next chapters, I think you have to think about the creation of non-conformities and the impact of this. And the other thing I would say, too, is that if you're going to do something like that, you probably want to do it for more than two years. You probably want to do it for five years at least, because two years is-
Just quick.
Quick?
Just quick.
I did not see a way to make the changes that were, even, I mean, someplace in this thing, no matter what we do, there's going to be non-conformity. We can mitigate some, we can eliminate some, but there are going to be non-conformities. And so, I was trying to address them.
Sure.
Just a general comment. When I was younger, I thought I was drowning. I was swimming in the ocean, and I had my glasses on. And I was just about to panic, call for help, and I put my knees down and hit the sand. It looks a lot deeper than it really is. I think that when we step back and look at our assumption as just how many non-conformities Title 21 rewrite is creating, we have to look and see where, what are the, how many, what are the non-conform, where are they being created by the Title 21 rewrite? We've heard a lot of public comments about how many non-conformities, is this creating non-conformities across the city? But one question we have is, where are those being created in the code? And what standards are people assuming are creating non-conformities? I think if we look at those more closely, you'll be, you'll be looking at more specific areas and fewer non-conformities than you're really, than we're really concerned about. For example, I won't name examples, but, so, that's, so when we're looking at making the non-conformity section easier with the, on the assumption that we're creating so many non-conformities, we may want to step back and say, are we creating all those non-conformities that we think we are?
And then the last part of that comment, the last part of the non-conforming section, it, it said anything that was created was conforming in a conforming section. That was, you know, to try to catch up, catch all those that were existing.
You mean the fire code, Jerry?
No, present code, post code.
I mean, okay. But they still, they still have to come down, make an application, pay a fee, big time out, and in some cases, hire professionals to prepare all that work. Jerry, we're asking our citizens, there's this, you're going to hear this.
I agree, but my point was that we put that provision in there, and I think Bob wanted in there, that basically would make staff look at the code in effect at the time, and they would be continuing to do. They have to carry those two codes. So, a lot of those were by that particular section, made them conforming.
Yeah, but I still have to come down and make an application.
Yeah, obviously, saying that you-
That's where, that's where we- That's where, that's where the problem was.
And I think that's a good point. Would you increase the zoning districts?
But we don't have a mandate.
But we tried to think about this today, kind of talked about it. Non-conformities are being created, so we really just need to sort through that to see exactly how many. You talk about where zoning being created with non-conformities. We're not zoning anything. We're certainly proposing changes to the zoning code and for, say, for example, the industrial is removed, the commercial is a part of it. Those structures would be conforming, whatever structures were in there would be conforming. So that's kind of a misnomer, but they're, and that was a big argument in the current case, those industrial problems. Now, one simple sentence in the non-conforming section makes them conforming.
Well, as far as vertical construction, but what about land?
Land use is a legislative thing that says, you know, you have what you have at the time. If the assembly decides that that's appropriate or if the commissioner or the other facility decides it's appropriate, it's a legislative prerogative for them to do that.
We can take a look and identify where non-conformities might be created, where they may not.
I think that's a good point, that as we go through this and ask, the question we should be asking ourselves, are we creating non-conformities to an undue degree?
Is there, can you do an unlimited renovation on the project if it's non-conforming and becomes conforming with the new code? If I want to gut my building and come in and try to get a permit, can I get one?
And either way, I read the code, that one section in there that says you're conforming, we have to compare it to the existing code and at the time it was built and you can continue to rebuild it forever and a day, just like that. But you can't, we can't apply the new standards against the code, against that problem.
Okay.
But it's non-conforming today, it'll become non-conforming into the future.
It'll be non-conforming, but technically conforming by that section or the non-conforming section, because that's, you know, the wording that Bob wanted in there, that all those existing non-conformities would be conforming. So we went through great things with legal on that issue because it allows in perpetuity what it makes the staff do is keep the old code and review those properties against the properties that come.
So what you mean by non-conforming is the word non-conforming puts these group of buildings in a special category that allows them to live by the old rules?
Right.
So Ray's got a building that he wants to totally gut, and it was built in 1968, and he wants to totally gut it. Parking standards at that time, say, were 1 to 300, it was a commercial. Provisionally adopted codes can modify that down to 1 to 250 or 1 to 275 or whatever it is. So if I understand what you're saying, he can stay in his old use, be conforming, but he has to use the higher parking standard because that's what was in play at the time. You can't mix and match or either all in that side of the code or you're in the all in the provision.
And this has nothing to do with the fire code, right? This is.
You're screwed with the fire code.
Right. Just like this couple of buildings in town were gutted and that was a mistake because.
I don't think we really totally ever thought that through that whole process. What you just said, I'm not sure that you would use some of the new code.
Why couldn't you?
I just, I'm not to that point where I would say, oh, because there was some benefit in the new code, why they would, you know, using it. I think you would tend to want to use it.
Yeah, just be nice to have an incentive to clean up some of these older junkie.
Smartest force. Jerry, on the top of page 559, I read, in all cases, the burden of establishing the existence of a legal non-conformity shall be solely upon the owner of the non-conformity, not the municipality. That doesn't quite read like what you just said.
Yes.
Hello, Chair, Mr. Ferguson. Currently, the owner is responsible for establishing or providing us the proof for the non-conformity. Staff does do a great deal of research, though, looking at old aerial photos and a lot of other research. It's really no different now than it will be in this new code.
I understand what you're saying, but we're asking the people to come down, fill out the paperwork, and pay a fee. And what I'm saying is for some period of time, I would ask us to consider waiving the fee if it's properly before this board. I'm just trying to, because I was, you know, I'm a newly-minted commissioner. I was lectured by the assembly to listen to all the people, and that was a major concern. Some of the people who spoke had never read Title 21, and I understand that. But in this case, I think we need to make this application process as easy as we can. And asking them to reach into a checkbook is going to cause a problem. All I'm saying is let's say, hey, we're trying to meet you, we're trying to listen to our public, and for a couple of years, five years, let's do what we can, because we are going to end up with non-conformities, people, and we are going to end up with upset people.
Are you speaking of application fees as applications in this section?
Applications for a non-conformity caused by this revision of Title 21.
Madam Chair, Mr. Ferguson. When the Girdwood chapter was enacted, they did a one-year period of time where the Girdwood community could come in and request the non-conformities, and at that time, the fees were waived.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for pointing that out.
Do any of the other commissioners have any comments at this particular point in time? Well, this has been an excellent discussion. I'm not sure that we have a solution at this particular point in time, so.
This is a big concern of mine in the end, by the economic impact we need, this unintended cost we're going to pass on the system, and that is a major concern.
Is there consensus to waive the fee for one-year period? What's the thoughts? You originally proposed two years, or you down to one year?
No, ma'am. I'm still at two years. The scope of this is bigger and our population base is bigger than Girdwood, and so I'm going to say that we need a little longer.
I'm not prepared to make a decision at this particular point in time.
Is there any impact on the department?
I think the impact would be significant.
Are you throwing all one year, and what's that going to do to them?
I think the impact could be fairly significant, yes.
We could certainly live with a year, you know, I'll just be frank with you, the budget for this year and next year is terrible. We're already looking at making cuts for this year as a result of what the assembly did on the money appropriation from the state, so we're going to have to make additional cuts for this year and significant cuts next year. And we're already, last year, so. But anyway, that's beside the point. We can live with the year. We're going to have trouble making budget this year and trouble making budget next year, so it's the right thing to do for at least a year, and if the commission thinks it's longer.
I have a question, maybe you can answer. If I own a piece of property and this thing makes it non-conforming, why do I have to go get permission from the city and pay a fee? That's what I don't, I don't get. Is there, does every property that becomes non-conforming have to go back and get permission to be that way?
In the financing, if somebody were going to sell their property, you know, depending how savvy the lenders are with the code and everything, they may want this document. It may be a new document that we have to come up with, that, you know, you are a legal non-conformity. We could do that, we could do that fairly easier than taking it to a board or the mission. So we might have to come up with an internal process, and we've done that of many other circumstances to register lots, non-conforming lots. We developed a mechanism for lots that weren't created legally to come in, show when they're created, show no public harm, and then we registered those lots as legal lots, so it would be the same kind of concept. And what's your opinion on that?
The lot registration is 350. The non-conforming determinations are 115 an hour.
We probably could do that, but we probably have a sense of fee to do that. I just don't know how big a demand that will be. I don't think any of us know.
And now in our situation, we have at a state level a similar sort of situation, only with different structures. We actually make a determination that entire classifications of uses are considered to be legal, not legal non-conformities. We actually have that as a document, and so we don't have to do it each and every time. We'll be able to identify the structures that actually need it in the first year and the type of adoption, and it actually gets to, those structures are actually listed in that document, so you don't have to go through that process.
Frankly, and we'll have, Tom will have to go through this a little bit more step, but I just don't know how many we're going to have, other than perhaps like an industrial district, given his limit there. But we looked at the setbacks and everything of the proposed new setbacks that are not contradictory to the existing, both the minimum and maximum, the coverages. I just, we didn't see where there were going to be a lot of dimensional non-conformities created.
Do you have that document?
We did that in our head today, talking.
Ah.
Maybe something we would look at and provide.
Well, you know, if we have the land, new land use map, you know, and had all those zoning districts and all that, that would be, that would limit the type of conversation we're having right now. But Mr. Bowles, Mr. Coffey, and then we're going to try to wrap this portion up. Yes?
Actually, the municipality used to do that. They rezoned an area they go through and they photograph all the non-conforming structures and whether by use or setback, and the files are here, still here today. But they stopped doing that because the cost was.
All right. Mr. Coffey, do you have a comment that you want to make?
No, I was just looking through the existing 2155 and non-conformities, and basically what Jerry said about land, there's provisions actually in this section where they dealt with different sized lots and so on, because there's a lot of things that came from the unification of the borough and the city with different standards, which is good, and that may address some of Jim's concerns about the timeline. If you find there's a sort of a problem that's generic across the board with a large number of properties or structures, you can handle it that way. But generally speaking, with the way that 12 is crafted and close to it, it pretty much, from my perspective, recognizes the bulk of the issues we're going to face and allows a fair amount of work to occur to repair, maintain, tenant improvements, those sorts of things. And if there's clarity on, is a roof, you know, is a roof a maintenance item? I think so, and so on. You get some clarity there, but beyond that, I don't know that what Jim is concerned about will be substantial or significant. And if so, then you may have to go to the assembly or you guys for the address if you find something significant.
Add one more, do I have under 12?
All right.
Page 567, lines 35 to 41, basically states that developments that were legally established can continue without changes, with the exception of the portion dealing with storm, dealing with stream, water body, and wetland protection. I have, I guess, a question to staff. Why do we have that exception? If we can proceed on everything else, why can't we proceed in, I guess, what I'm saying is delete the stream, water body, and wetland protection language?
The, there are setbacks, so where we have a setback from a street or side property line, that's a, that's still a non-conformity in the rewrite. This is a setback from a stream. The community is placed to high value on protecting the stream habitat and the, basically providing that setback. So that is basically the, I understand the Mahmud philosophy behind it. I probably have to get you more, I have to go back and ask around some more, but those are the two things that jump out at me at the Mahmud. But I can ask the question and get back to you.
The community is placed to high value and a lot of changes seems often to choose this one for more than, so if you give some more information to me, I would appreciate that. And then now I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Well, I will reiterate my position. This has been a very interesting conversation and I've learned a lot, discussion, I've learned a lot. I am not prepared to make any final decisions at this time. It's, I think it's given us all a lot to think about, unless someone else has a different opinion at this time. Okay. All right. Can we discuss, while you're still here and upright?
Upright, yeah.
Thank you. Can we have a discussion on zoning classifications for a moment because I think there's been some emails back and forth and some interesting thoughts coming forward?
Well, it has to do with basic philosophies of planning, I guess you might say. We're working under a number of constraints, one of which is we don't have the land use plan map, other of which is we don't have an economic analysis of the effects of the various districts. And because of that, you have a pretty high level of uncertainty, frankly, and that means you have an associated level of risk. And so if you begin to approach it that way, you know, you ask yourself the question of, is there a more incremental way of approaching this issue? And the major issue that I see is in terms of the misuse, mixed-use districts and the idea that they must always be imposed. Another way of approaching this is to look at the existing zoning districts, keep those existing zoning districts with some exceptions, and then make the mixed-use requirements standards that can be applied in certain residential and commercial districts. And what you get by approaching it that way is much more of a, as I said, an understanding of what you're doing is the best way to describe it, is that we have existing zones. We know what those zones are. We have a certain lot of familiarity and feel comfort with them. So if you continue to utilize them with some changes, you then know what you're doing when you make a decision. And that's important to me, at least. It also gives you the ability to, for the developer to make the determination as to whether or not mixed-use is appropriate or not. So it comes from the point of view of the existing zones probably will, may change or may stay the same, shall I say, and then if a developer wants to use the mixed-use requirements, they can. And so it's the determination by the developer that they want to do a rezone and use the mixed-use standards. So they're not, the mixed-use requirements are not districts anymore, they're standards that can be utilized. And so we do a rezoning from an R3 over to a mixed-use R3. You can do that, it's just that it's your decision as a developer to do that and to do it in a very specific way that deals with which types of those standards do you want to utilize? So that's kind of like the basis for what we're talking about.
Which would mean, basically, that mixed-use would be market-driven.
Market-driven, yeah.
As opposed to a requirement by regulation.
Right. So it's market-driven, it's driven by the site, it's driven by the economics of the time.
So you would envision the definitions being there, maybe not the restrictions so much, but there would be an RM1, an RM2, maybe.
Now, you dropped all the mixed-use.
Pretty much want to just keep the existing zones?
Keep the existing.
Just change some of the classification.
You take the existing zones, there's some that you do want to get rid of, and there's a couple that I can't remember right now.
In general?
But generally speaking, yes, you do keep the existing zones. You don't use the new mixed-use zones. When you come to R3, for example, and you're using R3, and for example, you're a developer and you think you want to use the mixed-use standards, there's a section in the code that says, basically, and if the individual wants to utilize mixed-use standards in section eight, which it is, he may do so.
Okay, so the standard definition will be there already to define whatever you're going to do, R1, R2, R3, whatever.
Exactly. So there's standards that are applied to a particular district, but you retain the districts with some changes.
I was trying to say, this guy wrong.
So, let me try.
You try.
Let me try. So all the zoning districts remain the same, all the uses in the zoning districts remain the same, but there will be an opportunity to apply the mixed-use standards for. But there will be an opportunity to apply the mixed-use standards for R3, R4, or whatever the, those standards, whatever those mixed-use standards would be for the applicable zone.
Right.
So we're throwing out chapter 5?
No.
I'm slow.
Yeah. I suggested to Connie that, in fact, we really do need to take chapter 5 up first because it just, everything falls from chapter 5. But, you know, I don't think we've come to closure on that just yet.
Right, right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes?
How does this differ from then making an overlay?
An overlay district has to be zoned. You actually have to have an overlay district. It would be a business district. They don't have one now. But if you had a business district, you'd have to rezone to the overlay district. It's a big process, okay? In this instance, all you do is basically say, I want to use the standards, the mixed standards, that is your decision, and there's the authorization of the code just to use those standards.
The fact that we're making them optional, I like, but my concern is that Peter has, Peter and I are neighbors, and I want to go to the developer per the mixed use and he doesn't. Whereas part of the mixed-use zones, we're talking about synergy between the, between everything being cohesive. And I think we're losing that.
Don't you think that's market-driven though? I mean, you wouldn't do that in an all-residential area. You would do it in one of those zones that were, one of those areas where you were in a fringe of a, of a place where you would want to use that.
I'm in favor of market-driven over, over standards. Do you really think it's market-driven?
And I think that's what you're going to have in this case. Because you're not going to go into someplace where you got rows and rows of fourplexes and there's no, and there's no commercial environment. However, if you're on a fringe that's on a road that you can use it, you might want to very well take that fourplex lot and make it have a mixed-use issue. And we're talking about, in this particular case, you know, it's, you're talking about infill today. And if it's not, that you can use, it's pretty easy to make that decision if it's on a road, you know, that has that need.
And there are actually some standards that you would actually state so that we use the mixed-use district. It'd have to be an arterial or collective and other aspects as well too. So you'd have a delimitation as to what you could actually put. It wouldn't be everywhere, it could be several.
Or Y, or 1A, or probably 8A.
So it's called an intent statement or district location statement.
Make some levitation of that. But give it the option to do it.
Yeah. And it minimizes the risk what we're going into too. I mean, that's what's bothering me is that.
The greatest risk is in the rezonings.
It's in the rezoning just, I think it's better that it's market-driven and it's driven by the specifics of the time. And I don't have the faith in plans that they could always understand the future for 20 years and then the planner.
Stacy?
Uses are hugely different in this Title 21 compared to the old. And there's so much more definition of uses and it does scare me.
But that's part of it too.
Yeah.
That's part of the discussion as well.
Yeah.
Because you may want to collapse a number of uses, make them more generic, and that way you have more flexibility and fewer opportunities for non-conformities.
Right.
So there's that aspect as well.
That's a good idea.
Let's hear from the other commissioners. Peter?
As far as, I'm totally in favor of the same zone. We have to tweak one or two.
We have, there has to be some changes.
I think we want to keep the existing zone, but I think that's just simplified. It will be non-conforming, which I think addresses the majority of my concerns. Then we've got to get, Stacy's issue is that's a whole other discussion.
So under the, if we kept the existing zones, played a little bit with some of the things.
Play which one?
Right. Well, okay, but let's say, does that satisfy your need for an economic study? Would you be willing to proceed if we kept the existing zones without a more definitive economic study?
I think it depends on chapter 5.
4 and 5, for zoning.
Yeah, it diminishes as we work with 4 and 5.
Okay, all right. And what about the land use map? Are you, if we keep the existing zones, are you willing to vote on our amendments in these provisionally adopted chapters without the land use map?
The real advantage of this approach is you don't have to have the land use plan map.
Right.
Because you're using an existing zone, you're not developing new zones that must be applied.
Well, it doesn't mean you can't have one in the future.
But you have one in the future.
Yes, that's exactly.
Not one in the new one. We don't want to have, that's, yeah, that is one.
You're not trying to.
We're moving something that creates these new things. I don't know where, what they are, if I know what they are, I don't know where they are. It's impacted by, by staying with the existing, that'll be, yeah, it no longer becomes the imperative.
Okay.
Still would like to, but yeah.
Just out of curiosity, did you get Marty's?
Marty?
McGee, the municipal officer?
I'm sure he gave the packet on Friday.
That along with the two economic impact analysis studies. So we do take exception to this, this idea that there's no economic impact analysis study.
Where did we get?
Well, you got the packet on Friday.
What's the rezone? I mean, the, our case, was it our casework? I've not opened my packet.
It's exhibits E1, E2, and E3. We presented the findings of E2 and E3 and decided.
First two are 2008, the last one's 2012.
Marty did take a look at it, your annual request. So it'd be good to bring this through tonight. He talked about, now Anchorage, like a lot of other counties, is auto driven. He talked about change, change in transition times and circumstances, use of automobile in mixed-use districts, and maybe his conclusions that you can read about the market.
Our findings are that the mixed-use zoning districts are going to have a neutral impact on land value as to use. And the findings are there.
He's just talking about, he's not talking about commercial.
Talking about commercial to mixed use.
Oh? Is he talking about commercial in this? He talks about.
He's comparing B3 to mixed-use districts.
Yeah, that's all. But commercials are just.
That's wrong.
That is, the last time I checked it was.
Well, B3 zoning to mixed-use zoning, commercial.
We get a square foot for B3 versus I2.
But the irony of this, just one last comment here, you know, everything is market-driven. There's no question about it. The creation of those districts is not going to diminish market-driven development. The creation of the zoning map is not going to be diminished or impaired by the creation of those districts. If you change, if you propose not to do that, you're going to have to go in and substantially amend the B3, the R3, the R4 districts to allow this, because some of the uses are not allowed in those districts that are allowed in the mixed use. The mixed use was never intended to be applied at a broad scale. It was only meant to be applied in a limited scale. And that's exactly how the planners develop the land use plan map. They look at the demographics, they look at the population needs, they look at the infrastructure, they look at the neighborhood needs, they color the maps and hope, and hope that it meets the community's needs and the market-driven demand.
Essentially, without the zoning districts, you do not have the tools to implement the comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is, that's basically largely based on a, the comprehensive plan and on current zoning patterns. So one of the most important differences between, for example, the R4 and the R4A is that the R4A, the kind of commercial that would be allowed in that district would be inappropriate for many areas today currently zoned R4. But it's, it could be appropriate in certain strategic sites within the areas, certain areas around Midtown.
So Tom, when you say that.
Which is what you're going to determine and not the market.
Yeah, I was going to say, is that, is that the planner's opinion or is that market-driven?
And it's, it's basically based on the comprehensive plan and current zone.
Which is a planner's opinion.
Yeah.
For example, for example.
If you could just hold that thought for a moment, okay? If you could hold that thought for a moment, I'd appreciate it. I think we have others that want to have, to jump in here. Jim, and then Mr. Coffey?
2006 and 2008 economic studies were on a different Title 21 than we're looking at today. And there were a lot of questions of the credibility and the conclusions of the 2008, 2008 economic study that were raised four, four and six years ago. I don't think it's a correct statement to say that it was, it's cost-neutral today. The analysis of 2006, 2008 says that. But there were also a lot of holes punched in question. And so I think it's a little bit reaching to say that it is cost-neutral today.
One of the exhibits.
A lot of things have changed in the last four and five years significantly. So Mr. Coffey? Mr. Coffey?
Yeah, the, I think as I understand the concept here is that currently in the R4 district, if you read 2140 and it's 145, and it talks about six things, is height limitations were being imposed in the R4 district that didn't exist before. The floor area ratios are being reduced from two to one, and a whole bunch of development rights that exist today in the R4 are being taken away under the proposed plan. Those are then restored if you change your zoning district to another zoning district. And so if your floor area ratio, one of the best examples is found right now, you have in title, in R4, if you build on an 11,500 square foot lot, you have a floor area ratio of two, which means you can build a 23,000 square foot building, and the height is unrestricted. If you adopt the provision, or the code as suggested here, the proposed code, the floor area ratio drops from two to one, so that means you could build an 11,500 square foot building on that same lot. So you've just cut your square footage in half. Plus, you've got a height limitation, I think it's 35 feet if I remember. And that's, that's one example in the R4. In the R, in the B3 district, there's a new height limitation as well. And the B3 district now everywhere is proposed, everywhere except in certain sections of Midtown, is 45 feet. So again, the, a building opportunity you would have under existing code is being taken away. Also, if you use mixed use and so, if you don't use mixed use, you have floor area ratios. If you do use mixed use, you get more floor area ratios. If you meet other standards, you can get even more, more construction. So in essence, it is, it is a coercive provision that says, if you own B3 and you're not selected to be in the mixed-use district in Midtown, your use is limited while the guy down the block, he gets a, he gets, he may get a step up because he gets more height, more floor area, and so on. And that's the coercive nature of it. The second part of it is, is if you use the R4 district as an example and allow the mixed use to occur there, as we've noted, it'll be market-driven and it'll occur in those places in the R4 where someone is willing to risk their money and so on to do it. Right? And then the second aspect is there are a set of standards that are required if they do it. And limitations, for example, in the R4, I think there's seven or eight proposed commercial uses. You know, no alcohol sales, but it's a beauty salon or a fitness center and so on, which are virtually identical to the ones in the proposed R4A zone, except you don't have to go through a rezone to do it, and you don't lose your property rights that you would lose under this thing. There's only four districts where mixed-use commercial residential would be permitted, as I understand the proposal. One of them is residential, and it's got to remain predominantly residential. It can't be predominantly commercial, and there's standards that prohibit that. And then the B1A and the B1B and the B3 as allowed uses. And right now, mixed use is allowed in all of those districts. If you read existing code, you can do the things, you can build residential. There's no standards particularly for it, but you can build it in the B3 and the B1A and the B1B. So the question is, what's the necessity of new things other than for the planners to pick the place where it's going to occur? And they'll do that through the land use plan map, which will come after the code's adopted. And then if you try to do something other than what that code suggests, for example, if you decide to do mixed use in the B3 zone and you're not part of that RMU or NMU, I guess they've dropped the RMU, that it would be the CMU and the NMU, the two mixed-use commercial districts. If you don't follow that, you're not going to be, change your zoning, you're not going to be allowed to do it. And you've just lost height and you've just lost square footage. To me, that's a backwards way of doing it. I mean, my view is if it's a permitted use and it continues to be a permitted use, then those who are entrepreneurial will come with the ways that it'll work, and it'll, it'll arise out of a demand and out of a need and not out of a prescriptive call. And that's really where the difference lies between what the staff is proposing and what I think would be a far better way of going. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Davis, do you have a response to that?
Yeah, I have several points of information about, I disagree with the way the R4 is characterized. And I think that there's a, I think there's some information in the memo that we sent about the differences between the R4 and the R4A. The R4 will allow the two FAR, as it does today. It will allow, according to our studies, where you have those few and proud who still do the high-density residential Park Plaza 2 type, it actually enables far more floor area than under current code. And we're going to provide the updated tests. And I recognize the outdated nature of the test. You'll see in your packet that we do intend to provide as exhibit E, overall E, the updates to those tests.
When do you think, I just have to interrupt you because, you know, we're on a timeline. We promised the Assembly that we would make our decisions and our recommendations.
This week.
And so we'll have that information this week?
This week. And that's what your, the cover memo says. Please read in this, the memo, the differences between the scale of commercial use allowed in the R4A and the variety of commercial use in the R4A as opposed to the R4, either current or existing. They are very different. And the difference there is important because we do have currently zoned R4 district areas today where we know, where I think the people who live there know, the people that live there that have property there know that it isn't appropriate to allow mixed use. We also know that the R4 district is very important for using efficiently to provide for our housing need. And one of the exhibits that you've received is the Anchorage Housing Study. It is in direct conflict with not only the comprehensive plan, but with our situation, with our lack of multifamily residential land, to allow that much commercial that we would be allowing in the R4A into the R4. It is, it is a lot of commercial. You know, this community needs those new districts in order to implement its new comprehensive plan. And that was a comprehensive plan developed by the community. The land use plan map was also the same thing. But now we also have those commercial, residential, industrial market studies. They're also saying we have to use our land efficiently. And we have to identify, we have to grow in a more efficient pattern. And that means using our infrastructure efficiently, our public infrastructure efficiently, and moving our highest intensity uses to certain centers in town. And the commercial study's not saying that we need high-rises in South Anchorage. The commercial study's not saying we need unlimited commercial at Diamond and Jewel Lake. We have a community out there saying that we want lower density out there. And we have a commercial study out that they're saying, you know what? There's not great demand for commercial. No one's going to lose their property value because of a four or five-story height limit out at Jewel Lake and Diamond. This community needs to grow in a more efficient and coordinated fashion.
That's correct. And staff has done its best, maybe their best guidance on what it would take to do that. You know, these districts aren't 50 years old. They're equally in zoning. They, you have to use.
They, you have to, you have to, you have to special limitation these districts to that till you get desired results. And the intent for the new districts was to be able to lessen that kind of need. And we did the study on the B3 properties, and ninety-five percent of them didn't develop over the two or three stories, so the height really wasn't needed or necessary. And when they look at the commercial uses in relation to the neighborhoods, they look microscopically into the neighborhoods to try to figure out what, what appropriate districts would be in coloring the map.
But unfortunately, Jerry, we don't have that information.
Well, actually, we're working off the nineteen eighty-two map. You do have the provisionally adopted, you do have the conceptually adopted land use plan map that is pretty much close to a finalized map. Things have changed. We've gotten, you know, Midtown is on hold, Midtown needs to be reevaluated to see what's happening there. But it really is, it has, we're dealing with very old, old zoning districts that most of the rest of the United States have amended to come into modern age.
Do you have some other comments?
Nineteen eighty-four.
I want to read the memo and how they would be implemented.
Thank you.
It's not a mandatory thing.
Thank you.
But it is necessary to create a cohesive district.
You know, I just point out that, you know, this is, these are discussions we're having right now. I have not come to a final conclusion. I'm assessing a particular approach, or going down that particular road, and the commission has the choice between the two, and the commission has to make that choice. It just has to be the best choice, given the facts, the information, and given your own obvious standard of how the need develops.
And I think, you know, my comment is, as far as residential development is concerned, it is quite obvious, from my having worked in the residential community for over thirty-two years and continuing to work in it in a full-time basis, that the mid-rise and the high-rise residential development and the mixed-use development is not the type of dwelling unit that this community wants to have. And, you know, I find it very disconcerting that there are continual references to Park Plaza, where that property was purchased for a dollar and twenty-five cents a square foot in twenty-some-odd years ago, to try and, whereas R3 and R4 today is somewhere between six, if you can find it, and twelve, that, you know, the economic study that we have relating to all this does not, any, any study that we have does not support three and four-story dwelling units for residential properties, unless it is subsidized. Because all of those that have done market buildings of those types are not doing them anymore, quite frankly. And you've heard me all say that in the past, and I will continue to say it as long as these issues occur for discussion. Ray?
I'm not an expert in a comprehensive plan, but what I do know is that you take public testimony, and then you take it to a, a public official, and they exercise their judgment based on what they hear, and based on what they think is practical. Everybody has their wish list, but you don't get everything that you want. And I'm not swayed by the argument that the comprehensive plan is this and only this. If, if we see that there's a problem, and we represent people from all walks of life, I'm going to point out the problem, and I'm going to support a solution, and I'm not going to be swayed that the, the comprehensive plan is God, when there's actually a, if there is a, a direct conflict based on practicality, based on, you're talking to, and I'm not tooting your horn, but one of the biggest risk takers there is, Connie, and she's a leading expert in residential field. And if there's a risk to be taken, she'd be taking it. I mean, she's telling you the truth. And if we, we disregard that type of advice because the comprehensive plans held on, held over our head, I don't think that that in itself is, is the final word. And I, I'm not swayed by that argument. And that's all I have to say.
Any other comments at this time? Do you want the final word?
Well, I mean, we haven't even started talking about this yet. It's not been scheduled, you know? And I think we have to do some more work in terms of figuring out the specifics of this, and frankly, I'm still working on that aspect of it. But I think a lot of the issues that I've heard this evening can be dealt with pretty effectively by some changes. But, you know, absent the specifics, it's difficult to talk about right now. But that's something I think is about a week away.
All right.
I think I just want to say that, you know, when we get to this, we start getting more and more into it, I'm, I'm in favor of innovation and, and not restrict innovation. It's what built us, built the city, built the state, built the country. And so if I, if I sense restriction of innovation, I don't care. And what I mean by being innovative is that when you put a subdivision together, or you put a mixed use district together, you're, you're scoping out the rest of the country, seeing what's worth, what doesn't, what's attractive, what isn't. And, and I just don't want to limit that. I do not, I think that's, that makes the community better, quite frankly.
So you're for a market-driven?
Well, to an extent, yes. You know, it, it, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's some subset checks and balances with, with, with the community councils and whatnot, that, that, you know, something tries to sneak through that isn't quite kosher with everything, and so, but it, you know, again, change is inevitable, inevitable, and, and there are some very bright people out there, and I'm not one to sit here and say, I know what that all is. And I don't want to put the restrictions on making it better. Flexibility, allowing innovation.
Those are good comments. Anything else? Well, I don't think we've gotten much resolution on non-conformities and zoning classifications. So can we just do really quickly the proposed revisions to twenty-one oh eight oh four oh regarding dedication for access? And then we're going to take a little break, and come back and start on chapter seven, development standards.
But just a point of order here, that I thought we were, the, the changes that we had talked about here, we had agreed to, didn't we?
Yes, except for the final.
Yeah, except for the final one, but I would clarify that. In fact, I think there was a agreement.
Yes, there was, except for the last one. Yep, that's right.
You want to finish this?
I want, yes.
Okay.
You get to talk.
We dealt with this about a week ago on dedications, and I started thinking about it after the fact. And you might recall, it was called trails, and we don't really dedicate trails per se, we dedicate walkways and bikeways and sidewalks. And so, and it seemed like there was a lot of redundancy in the language here. So what I did is I went back and I basically changed, changed the basic structure to make it read more simply, and to kind of sort out a variety of things, and to be sure that we use the right language, because language is exceedingly important. So basically, what this does is renames this to say, not say trails, but other access providing connectivity to public lands, because that's really what it's all about. It's not trails, it's about this connectivity to public lands. And so there was a long stipulation about which plans control. This one is actually very simple, I think. It shall require the dedication easement for access to these areas, which is what we had before in adopted municipal plans. And so there was a listing of plans, I just said adopted municipal plans, thought that was sufficient. So I'm reading from D here, the second sentence in D is the same as before, it hasn't changed. And to one, it clarified, you go to D1 then, it's then broken into two parts, it's pedestrian and vehicular right-of-way. There was a confusion, I thought, between pedestrian and vehicular. So this tries to clarify that what you're talking about in one instance is pedestrian. And so it basically says dedication of an easement or a walkway, because we deal with walkways, not just easements, for connectivity into these areas. So the listing is the same as before, with the exception for the Chugatz State Park access inventory. That access inventory is going to be revised, that it's out right now in the revised plan. And so the wording is for successor plans. So if you were to adopt the wording as we have right now, you'd have an outdated plan that you're referencing, it would be actually rescinded when you adopt the other plan. So the wording it says is, "Anymore connectivity or access to Chugatz State Park as identified in adopted plans, or the Chugatz State Park inventory or successor plans." And the next sentence is the same way as before, hasn't changed. And then subsection B is vehicular right-of-way, we've had a long discussion about that before. And what this says is, "It shall require the dedication of vehicular right-of-way for public access as defined in these various plans." And it does not say anything about improvement. And the only difference here that I would point out is, I think before in B, we said the plotting authority may require, as opposed to shall require. And I put shall require in there because that's what we originally started with, but we may want to go back to may on this one on vehicular. So anyway, this is just clean-up language to basically make it, I think, more straightforward, have it read better, use correct terms, and to correctness and stuff.
Are we going to get a copy of that, or what?
Yeah, we have copies.
I accept it. She has copies.
I think it should be made, shall it?
Thank you. There's some extra ones, but I thought it was.
Is there maybe?
I think we did.
Did it?
Yeah. Yeah, they were emailed out last Thursday, as I recall.
Oh. I wouldn't hear it.
We, it was last Thursday.
Don't assume anything, Alan. I'll leave for one week and all hell breaks loose.
So Bruce, when you said an acceptable pedestrian easement shall be at least twenty feet wide, was that what we had previously?
Yeah, I said you had previously, I haven't changed that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, then try and change it.
Standard on existing recognized, you were.
Why twenty feet? I mean, that's, that's a minimum standard for a road. Because you've got twenty feet of blacktop. That's, that's pretty wide.
We usually use ten, by the way, but it, for some reason, was twenty before. So I'm pretty sure.
Now, a car is seven and a half feet wide, in perspective, so you can put two cars down this thing.
We would use ten.
The twenty feet?
Right.
That's a lot.
And if it is twenty feet, even though it's a pedestrian easement, someone's going to put a car down it.
Well, it's just, it's just, it's just, it's just a lot.
You just need it wide enough for a bobcat.
Well, I would say ten feet would be, would be.
That actually makes more sense.
Yeah.
I didn't try and change this, but I left my own devices at a ten feet.
It's a five-foot path with a, some landscaping on either side. I think that's, you know, natural landscape.
No, I don't think it's going to be landscaping, I think it's going to be actually shoulders of this feet.
Shoulder, okay.
But the wording, if you say at least ten feet, it gives you the discretion to include the necessary aspects of the trail. And sometimes the trail's not going to be ten feet, because you've got to put the fill in there, and all that sort of stuff.
Right, yeah.
You've got the side slopes and all that. So it has to be at least, but it shouldn't be twenty, it should be ten. I would agree.
Yeah. Twenty feet, that's, that's.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree.
And then on the last sentence, "An acceptable vehicular right-of-way shall be," I thought we, we said a public use easement that is platted and dedicated in accordance with the relevant provisions of this code, not a public street. I mean, there is, you know, we're talking quite a bit about, there's a public street, there's a private street, there are public use easements, they all have different definitions and requirements. And so I would recommend a public use easement, which seems appropriate as far as access to the park is concerned.
Well, it's a public, okay, that'll work. Yeah, because it's a public use.
It's dedicated to the public.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
How do you determine by this whether it's a pedestrian access or a vehicle access?
At the time of plotting. There's a discretion.
But it's determined by the plotting authority, and so that'd be a risk to a developer, because he would not be able to read this and determine whether he had a vehicle access or a pedestrian access.
No, actually, it says in adopted plans. So if the adopted plan says vehicular access, that's what it is. And so you're actually delimiting the authority down to what's been adopted in plans.
Yeah, but they both talk about access to trails.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm reading, is if I had a trail, I couldn't determine from this document whether that meant a vehicle access to that trail, or whether that meant a pedestrian access to the trail. Focusing on the word trails, public access to trails.
Well, to build a trail, you're going to have to have vehicle access, you know? Ten feet's plenty wide for that, too.
But I mean, the, the road's going to be, what's the minimum width for a vehicle right-of-way?
Fifty, sixty.
Okay, okay. So it's either, it could be fifty, or if we change the first one, it could be ten. And I'm just trying to determine, you know, I'm sitting here, if I had a piece of property, and I'm trying to read this to see whether or not I built, I built a trail or I built a vehicle access, and I can't determine.
Well, that's going to be determined in part by the park plan that is, that your property is going to be adjacent to, and it is also going to be determined by your own subdivision layout. And so I-
You don't see a problem?
I don't see a problem.
Okay.
Actually, it dilemmas their authority, because it has to be in adopted plan, and that's the advice given by the attorney, is that it has to be in adopted plan.
I like that aspect.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So if we change under 1A, twenty feet to ten feet, and we shall change public street to a public use easement that is platted and dedicated is, are there any other changes to the language that may and shall? May.
Yeah, may.
Under the first sentence, D1, the plotting authority, may.
And just to raise the issue, why is it requiring the first part, in the 1A, and requiring the second?
I would go with, I would go with.
I was saying may in both cases.
Yes, all right. Okay. Anything else? All right. You've accomplished something.
Before you take a break?
Yes.
Could I talk about an upcoming meeting that we need to schedule?
Uh, yes. You may.
Someone wants to go home.
We have a special case that we need to bring to you, and we have to notice it for public carries. And we need to get to you either June eleventh or eighteen.
Mr. Barrett, before you got here, discussed this situation with me. This is for the football fields in the South High, High School area, and-
Just the baseball portion.
The baseball, just the baseball portion. Okay, got to get my athletic game correct here.
Wrong ball.
Right, wrong, wrong, wrong ball. Okay. Thanks, everyone, thanks.
The long and short of it is, for the whole commission's benefit-
Right.
UDC reviewed it, the special limitations of the zoning require the planning commission to review it. The planning commission reviewed it in two thousand two, gave it its blessing, the specifics for the bleachers and the concession stands, et cetera, were not part of that. So we took that to the UDC. It went under appeal. We, it, we, we issued building permits, it went under appeal after we issued the building permits, which was after the appeal came. But legal, working with the people, decided they need to have some extra time for the field, so we wind up being to you, going to the board of adjustment. And the decision was to take it planning direction. So we need to bring it to you in an expedited way, in one of those things.
Okay, well, here's, here's my thought. My thought is, is that nothing is going to stand in the way of our finishing the Title twenty-one rewrite. Okay? So on June eleventh, which is, I understand, the earliest time that it can be scheduled, my recommendation would be that we put our Title twenty-one work first, and you put your cases sequentially, and that would be the last case.
It'll be, if this change will be passed, if you do that, you should do it, just do it on the eighteenth and you're done with it. But, but I'm just telling you, they, it probably wouldn't be considerate, probably, you know, depending on how, if you, you know, how long you take in the earlier part of the year. It'd probably be better, you know, if you did on the eighteenth. Is it going to take too long there? There'll be a lot of testing.
The cops were called on the contractor putting in the handrails, and the job was shut down. And the kids are upset, and you might have five thousand little kids.
It's not the kids, it's booster fun. Everybody else that wants to play some baseball there.
Right. Well-
Might, drive the cop, please.
Might, drive the cop, please. I think there's a.
Can I, can I ask what Dan had to say?
Well, this is, this is not a, an issue for Mr. Coffee. This is an issue for the commission.
Connie, I don't know how long did you expect it will take on that 11th meeting. We're gonna have some of the work done on the 4th.
Correct.
We've already accomplished a lot of that. I don't know whether an hour, hour and a half would be appropriate, but I think if that's, if that, if they wanted to do on the 11th, where, I think this group is about to burn out of meetings.
Right.
So, you know, I would think that we set it to the 11th, and set a limit on the amount of time that we're gonna spend on Title 21.
Right.
Whether it be an hour and a half or two hours.
Right.
And then hear this afterwards.
Yep.
I think that's, you know, they're the ones that want to, certainly, I think we'd need to do that, but I think we also have to know that we have worked, that we've been working on for a long time.
That's right.
And that needs to be accomplished first, and then, and I don't believe it's gonna take us that long. We've had all these work sessions and discussion, I think we've reached a consensus now, it's just bringing it to the table.
Okay. What's everyone else's wish?
How busy is your agenda on the 4th?
If you have a consensus.
Well, we have, we have a fairly busy agenda for the 4th, and we have, I think, three conditional uses, which are always interesting. So, you know, what I would say, what I would say to the commissioners is be prepared to stay late on the 4th, be prepared to stay late on the 11th, and let's get it over with.
Well, I got all three Mondays blocked off, so.
Yeah, but not for this, right?
Well, now that, now that you have a consensus, I mean, you guys are busy beaters, lots of
fun.
I think, I think the consensus is, it's the 11th, is that, we're, we're just.
I don't think it should be on the same day. I don't think it's.
Oh, you don't think it should be, you don't think it should be on the 11th?
I think it's more 11.
You wanna do it on, you wanna do it on the 18th, then? You wanna do it on the 18th?
One more Monday.
I'm gonna be out of town anyway.
Lucky you.
You don't like sports anyway.
I was gonna be out of town. Oh, damn, alright. Alright, so you would, alright, let's just raise your hand if you want it on the 18th.
That's fine.
Alright, okay, so. You can, you can, oh, you can, oh. Alright, so it'll be on the 18th.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute break, then we're gonna come back, then we're gonna do Chapter 7.
Connie, what time do you find it in the morning?
8:30. They're leaving at 8:30.
Are you taking the 18th?
No, I'm.
My time's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm 11:30 or something around that thing, so. Yeah, you know, I'm up at four o'clock, 3:00.
I'm up at 3:00 in the morning. Now, I don't really.
Something's.
Driving. Oh, my gosh, I had a ball.
It's a real difference of a thing.
None of that.
It's a classic difference of a thing.
Oh, my.
It'll, it'll structure very great.
My, my, I'm not gonna.
Maybe.
Yeah. So, you know, it's. My, my.
It's.
My.
It's.
My.
It's.
My.
It's.
And we can't, well, we can't.
Well, yeah. It's teaching psychology.
You know, where Alaska lives and all, each other's like, well, I didn't have them like to the valley, but they'll want to have, they are, you know?
Spend all that time to get out.
And they're willing to spend all that time driving through, you know, for gas, you know, having their cars where else three years ago, in order to have the yard. And so what we certainly need are townhouse style units.
And the guy.
You know, and look at the townhouse required for their.
Oh, yeah, I was all. So, so anyway. You put it there. You're a bitch out. For the guy at the store. And the, the, the UDC, the UDC. But, so, so, so anyway.
And that's preferable to.
Yeah, well.
You're ready to do that.
Oh, yeah, I was buying a loan, I was feeding the heart with that. Looking on the Google, looking at all the different things, big, big lumber, elephant, all that, what do you want to do?
You know, but really, quite frankly, most markets.
Topics that came up in the corner, they're shocking, and, you know, it's like adults paying their ventures all. They came recently, what do you think?
Yeah, that's exactly true.
Kind of voiceless, right?
Yeah, it's always said that way.
Cultural preference has not changed since 2000.
I pay my.
Markets changed.
And I'm gonna keep paying, I'm paying you guys, maybe, I am not qualified to make that decision. I just pay my taxes, they all laugh about that. I had a great time, absolutely.
I don't remember getting it.
Well, they talk about.
Because if someone tells them, yeah, you know, or, then you know.
But I have to, this is a big, this is a big time.
Right.
It's just the.
Right. He's talking, he's built two buildings, two, is not building either building, just what he's building, single family kind of video on that, on that piece of land, because he didn't have enough lawyers for, for, they didn't, for, you know, and he had to, you know, after a certain time, he felt he lost one at a time, he couldn't build the 30, he had all the insurance that he needed to make it quite empty. And that's recent.
So, you're doing the 7.
So, all this country, what, was it? Was it because? So, and we're. Now, that is really popular, but they're, they're showing us all.
And I'd like to get five on this.
That's vast. And busy.
I'd like to five, you're like, seven.
I was, I was. I was. I'm looking at my. So, so something came up, something came up with this. I'm making, centrifuges, you know, 75, 170, when somewhere had a, had a air force, Colonel Luck. No, that's.
We can't tell you how to do it with it.
Bruce, thank you. Go home and get better.
I remember that was, a few of them that were expected, another one. There's something, it's a sad state. Like, something basic, and a lot of people have, they were waiting, they were waiting for it, and that's way, everything. When I found out something about that, I was distracted. I was like, no, I know, I think everything, like, even if it's something, because, we're still seeing it as a people. They were, they were had, they were had.
Where, what means are you going to Terry? God, it's. You're going to, you're going to.
Something really weird, it sounds bogus, really, it's all like, actually, maybe I'm thinking that, I don't know if they knew what I'm thinking of, but there's.
Where, what means are you going to Terry? God, it's. You're going to, you're going to.
Something really weird, it sounds bogus, really, it's all like, actually, maybe I'm thinking that, I don't know if they knew what I'm thinking of, but there's.
Like, rearranging. You know. I tried it. They, they, they looked a lot like. Come back on the count, these times on, this, this. You get someone to say the words and we're shut out.
Thought about it. I was gonna, shoot the cops. Oh, that going on downtown?
Jim, Jim, they're sending them out there.
It started last week, I expected to go for.
In eight.
A while, a while. Everybody's still whatever, you know, you're best to have. You know, I mean, that's. Really relative, the guy, I mean.
Really.
He didn't plead guilty to consulting his wife, his son. But that's a different issue. What I've heard, a story, it sounds like, it's a, I've heard, it's a, like, if I were a guy, I would, I would talk to him. I've got something to want to ask.
Mr. Dan. Mr. Dan.
Bruce, always a delight to see you.
Yeah.
I got a whole, like.
So you, uh.
Chapter 7 shouldn't take more than 40 minutes.
So you, you stole the bridge from us.
I vaguely remember. I've been to a couple of public hearings, like, library, and that would probably be it. But it's probably where it's.
I've gone to like three of them, like, companies who like this one.
Crazy.
This is, this is, I've been to, it's kind of weird, I've been to, you see, I can see you, I can see you doing learning, you know, rather than talking, there's this big line across the front, you know what I mean, there's, you know, you're in a meeting around, or like semi-round, you have to make a difference, you know, rather than talking to each other, rather than talking to your microphone, you know what I mean? It seems like you get a lot more done as.
Well, I learned a lot, too, from these other commissioners.
Yeah, I'm sure, it's really cool. How long have you been on?
Since December.
Oh, really? That's why you're learning, right?
Alright.
No, definitely.
Alright. Let's go, guys. Yes. Let's go. Right, where's my gavel? Come on.
You need a shalali.
Oh, thanks, thanks. Thanks. Okay, alright, we are on Chapter 7. Next week, we want to do 5 and 7, but we're gonna, we've done a lot of work on 7. We've had a total of six hours of meetings on 7.
Yes.
On a little. So, Sally?
No, I have a.
Would you like to start?
Well, also walking through, we kind of followed along with the memo, the general provisions, and this, this was in place from engineers from the community. Basically, the first multiple, what, third, seventh paragraphs relate to amending the general provisions, which relate to the purpose. And most of these, if you look for, were trying to get rid of ambiguity.
So, this, this is generated from what, again?
Connie, Terry, and engineers from the community, and I met, and to get input on Chapter 7.
Okay.
So this is a reflection of that little supplement.
And this was all mutually agreed to, so engineering and everybody, you know, looked at it, there's no, okay.
Yes.
Is this after the public hearing?
I'm sorry, what?
Is this after the public hearing?
Yes, this was just.
It was a committee, committee meeting.
Friday, and Thursday, and today, the end of last week.
You guys want to pick on eight and then kind of let it go?
So anyway, I think the main provision, main changes to the provisions on the purpose related to trying to get rid of terminology that seemed ambiguous or just kind of extra fluff, so the idea was trying to make it a little more concrete. I don't want to add anything to that.
Well, there seem to be a lot of opinions, I would say, and what we tried to do was make it a little briefer, for example, in item number three, to protect, to protect public and private investment through use of open space as opposed preservation of open spaces, protection of natural resources, buffers between incompatible uses and along roadways. Our concern was, really quite frankly, that if you say, if protection of natural resources, yes, we agree with that, including existing trees, that then if we needed to clear a particular piece of property, then, then this could come back and say, well, you know, including existing trees, you know, and I think that that would be a problem. So, that was our thought. And to promote sound management of water quality and quantity through preservation of natural areas and their hydrological functions, and by encouraging soil management. And the use of native plant materials, well, you know, some widowed over plant materials that come from British Columbia are absolutely as good or better than native plant materials. And instead, item number six, we thought creativity and artistic expression were one and the same thing, and so we just, we would recommend that we add affordability. And to strengthen and protect the unique character, we think unique character says image and identity of the community, and by encouraging, and item number nine, by encouraging physical development that is compatible with the character scale and function of the surrounding area, and to encourage developments that relate to adjoining public streets, open spaces, and neighborhoods. And to provide connectivity for the safe and efficient use of people's goods and services, including roads and pedestrians. I am the wordsmith that did this, so do you have any additional comments or objections?
I just, I just have a question on the current page two.
Page two?
Yeah, 21072, where the words, community goals. How does one derive of what that is?
I guess through the comprehensive plan and the other plans that have been adopted. That's how I interpreted it.
I'm sorry, what's the?
Hmm?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
But reasonable balance, yeah.
The definition, how, how does one come to a, to a conclusion what a community goal is?
Well, I think that would probably refer, well, there's certainly the comprehensive plan, adopted goals, policies, so that would certainly be included in that.
Why did it say that, then?
You could say that support the comprehensive plan.
But then it only balances the comprehensive plan against other things, so.
Right.
Yeah.
It is to me, when you say community goal, I mean, that's, that's so.
Would you like to take that out and say to provide standards that reasonably promote economic growth, quality of life, and development cost, or that reasonably.
I just, I just have a question on the current page two.
Page two?
Yeah, 21072. With the words, "community goals." How does one derive of what that is?
I guess through the comprehensive plan and the other plans that have been adopted. That's how I interpreted it.
I'm sorry, what's the...
Hmm?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
But reasonably balanced, yeah.
The definition, how, how does one come to a, to a conclusion what a community goal is?
Well, I think that would probably refer, well, there's certainly the comprehensive plan adopted goals, policies, so that would certainly be included in that.
Why didn't it say that then?
You could say that support the comprehensive plan.
But then it only balances the comprehensive plan against other things, so...
Right.
Yeah.
It is to me, when you say community goals, I mean, that's, that's so...
Would you like to take that out and say to provide standards that reasonably promote economic growth, quality of life, and development cost, or that reasonably balance economic growth, quality of life, and development cost?
Well, you could almost take out the word "goals."
Yeah, you could.
You know, balance the community, economic growth, quality of life, and development cost.
I support that.
You know?
I think that changes the meaning. I think it really was speaking to the comprehensive plan, which is what I was implying.
Well, if that's intense, and I should say that, because community goals can be interpreted through relation to Sunday, in my view.
I agree.
Community goals as reflected in the comprehensive plan?
Let's go, delete, just delete it. Community says it all.
Mr. Bolsh, you haven't said much tonight, so we'll get your comments.
Paragraph A, under purpose, it says there, uh, towards the end, that it implements comprehensive plan vision for a more attractive, efficient, livable community. Doesn't that say it?
I would delete one through eleven.
Exactly. After that period, delete everything else.
I think we talked about this when we talked about chapter one, because there are so much purpose statements. I don't even know what that does in a legal interpretation, these documents. I've looked at all the other community codes, and I don't see those in any other document. This is the only one that I found, and I don't see any purpose in one through eleven.
Could we add then, if we were going to do that, plan vision for a more attractive, efficient, affordable, and livable community? I think affordability is a factor that we have to take into consideration.
Yeah, that needs to be acknowledged.
Yeah.
Can I take up? We're going to delete all of one through eleven?
Well, I only, that was the first question. I had some more, wait. About every other one, I was gonna, I was gonna get on the roll. But if you get all eleven gone, then I don't have to do that. Cut you off. Yeah. You're stealing my thunder, Sally.
You know, you know what I like so much about this group is it really makes me look like a moderate.
Yeah. That is a joke.
Yeah, yeah, it really does. I like this group.
Mr. Vaughn Cruz.
All right. Do we have anything? All right. What is the wish of the commission here? Is, is, are you deleting?
Just 'cause I prefer mixed.
Yeah, I agree.
We're inserting a gravel and, um...
Affordable.
They're making sense, they go to this area.
Inserting affordable up above and deleting one through eleven. I'm in favor of that.
You should. I'll go with that.
Then do we need to delete the specific purposes of this chapter?
Yes.
That one sentence?
Okay. Like I said, it makes me look like a moderate.
That was easy for, uh, ten.
We have another purpose section we're going to next, which is on page 282, D1.
Well, actually, uh, under B, I think we have B, buildings to have access. Every building shall be on a lot abutting on a constructed, public or private street. So it's public or private.
Public, correct?
Okay. And, all right, so Sally?
Back to my argument. Does this mean the road has to be constructed before Ray builds the subdivision?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Every building shall be on a lot abutting on a constructed, public street or private road. Okay, if it's, if the road's not in, and he's building the building, is that a problem?
Well, currently...
Asphalt's not in, we've done it before, even with no curb and gutter.
Currently, what is allowed is one structure on a tract of land prior to the plat being recorded.
Is that what this says? I don't have a problem with what you said with being allowed. That's, that's fine.
Since this standard may be waived by approval of the municipal engineer, traffic engineer, and the director, so normally you would go to the building department and you would get a permit for one house on a tract. It's my understanding.
Okay, 'cause we did hit and go that way. That whole phase, a whole phase of it was built before the asphalt and had the curb in.
So you did more than one house per lot?
There was probably thirty houses that were done, and then they came in and paved the street and did the curb and gutter.
And that's some advantage, because the paving doesn't get torn up by the heavy trucks and everything else.
That, that was what the argument was, and it seemed to win over and it worked fine.
But the plat was recorded under those circumstances.
Yeah, it was a recorded plat, just that the road wasn't completely constructed.
And now financing purposes will not allow that, the recording of the plat before, at least in the two local banks, I think, that are currently doing business for subdivisions. Financing does not allow you to record the plat until the improvements are in. And that includes paving. Except for one lot.
So does everything get financed?
A lot. If you're going to have financing, you will not be able to do that under these circum, you know, under the circumstances we've just talked about. If you're doing it for cash and you will post your bond for the improvements, then you can go ahead and record your plat.
So the bank won't take it, the fact that you got a bond app to give you the improvements? I mean, municipality covers that, why wouldn't it cover the bank?
There have been issues in the past.
No, this is individual lot financing, not financing.
No, this is subdivision financing.
So until the curb and gutter is in, and it's, you can drive down it?
You can, you can basically record your plat when it, you know, for... The municipality will allow you to record your plat at any time, as long as you have posted the appropriate guarantees. Okay? However, if those guarantees in part are coming from interim construction financing from a local lender, they, as policy, are, do not want you to record your plat until the improvements are finished.
So what are you saying, that it's not going to happen enough to want to do anything about this?
I don't, I don't think so.
That's, 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 that's something not right. Doesn't make sense.
Well, if you got a little small fire, you know, four lot subdivision on five acres, I mean, that theoretically could be done with cash. And there's a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot of those, but I mean, that's what's left. Jerry, is there a problem to building before the asphalt's laid?
Well, we've had many problems with, sometimes developers don't always get the projects finished in the time periods that they think they're going to get finished, or they go, you know, have financial issues, and you have homeowners that are in the homes and subdivision agreements are working. So we have traditionally limited it to one, one structure.
Okay.
And I think that's appropriate. There have been a number of subdivisions.
Problems?
Yes. Yes, in the last six or eight years. A significant number.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, moving on. Sally?
D1, purpose. Basically, the first sentence was revised to delete design-related provisions and just to say the intent of this chapter, and then the second sentence was deleted. It is not a general waiver or weakening. Anyone have any problems with those revisions?
Set along the same lines. Revision.
Okay, to D4.
Well, I'd like to say something about D2. A residential design standards. I do understand that the mayor's recommendation is the deletion of design standards. I believe the residential community, the residential building community has responded to market concerns and is building a much better product than what was built five or six years ago, and I commend them for that, but I would like to see a little more guarantee that that type of development will continue in the future. And I am not going to be supportive of residential design standards being totally deleted from this Title 21. And I will be back to you for my recommendations, but I'm, I'm not going to be supporting the total deletion of residential design standards. Because it could happen again. It could very well happen again. Okay? I may be outvoted, but I will lobby hard.
So we'll talk about that at the end of the chapter?
Yes.
But if we're going to talk about residential at the end, should we talk about public and commercial too, institutionally?
I don't know anything about public and commercial. It's not my area of knowledge or expertise, so I'm only going to address residential design standards.
I will try to get something together.
In D4, uh, that was revised to, page 222, D4, that was revised to delete the forward example that was in there. And then to add at the end, compliance from the director or appropriate governing body.
Any concerns?
So you're just deleting the one sentence or the whole after, for example?
No, just, well, that whole sentence, it starts, "for example,"
Yeah.
and then it continues on with the by right projects, and then at the end of that sentence, it's written approval of the ultimate equivalent compliance from the director or appropriate governing body.
Okay.
Going on to D5. The concern here was that there's an inconsistency. There's thirty days. The director's supposed to render his decision within thirty days, but then if it's not rendered within forty days, it stands as approved. The thought was to be consistent. The director makes a decision within thirty days, and if he doesn't, then the thirty days are up, the application is approved, or go with forty days, but go with the same, whether it be thirty or forty. Have consistency between those two. So I guess there should be discussion on whether we want it to be thirty or forty.
I support thirty. Shooting's better.
Everyone's thirty and one forty.
Why not, why not thirty-one?
Anything. Thirty-one and a half, I'll think.
Thirty-two point four.
You can have thirty business days.
Two hours sixteen.
Is that holiday?
Thirty?
Is it, are days defined somewhere else in the document?
It's a calendar day. It's a calendar day.
Insert calendar.
Start to act like legislators now.
So we should insert calendar days?
No, no, no.
Twenty-one fourteen oh two oh, D.
Okay.
It's not in the...
Is that vision?
That computation of time, you'll find it under twenty-one fourteen oh two oh.
I think you have this almost memorized. Do you dream in Title 21?
I'm getting ready.
Oh, nightmares.
All right.
D6?
Intervention for Tom.
Probably page 283. Each of these criteria was revised slightly for clarity purposes. Instead of saying "to the same degree or better," it was "to no less than the same degree as the subject standard" for A, D, and C.
So that's protecting the applicant from being able to do more, I think, that change.
Well, I think it's really just more clarification. Before it said "the same or better degree," and I thought that was kind of awkward, better to say "to the standard," "to no less than the same degree as the subject standard."
No one is objecting, so on we go.
Oh, two oh. Another purpose section. It's shortened with kind of the same thought. I'm trying to make it cleaner, clearer, more concise.
So are you going to put this stuff in there, N S?
Yes, we're going to have them in the list of an amendments.
Hard to write all this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and then she's going to put it in the N S version for us as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go with thirty days then.
Okay. I saw something in the water over there.
Twelve o'clock my time, or something like that, so this is what happens to me, Connie.
All right, is everyone in agreement with 2107 oh two oh A purpose? All right, okay. I'm afraid to go to stream, water body, and wetland purpose. No, I think we're all right.
The amendment to B3C was talked about in one of the prior work sessions, and that has to do with having the final approval conditioned upon obtaining the wetlands permit as opposed to requiring the wetlands permit first.
Which number, yeah?
Three C.
It's B3C.
Relationship to other regulations.
On the next page. Can you read the modified again?
The decision-making body should grant final approval.
You have a copy of it?
Do you want a copy?
Yeah.
Just for the record, Sally, I have mine.
Thanks, Dana.
No, we're saying that, the way it reads right now is you have to have that permit before you could get approval, and the way it is now is you can get your approval conditioned upon getting the permit, and they wanted to keep it the same way so that there would be some pressure on the core of engineers to actually issue the permit. So you have your approval, it would just be conditioned upon obtaining the wetland permit. The way it reads right now is it couldn't be granted without the wetlands permit.
So it would not come to the planning board or the planning and zoning commission without having your core permit first.
Core permit?
The core permit could be concurrent.
Well, it can't, this doesn't prevent it from being concurrently. You make your application to both, and, but more than likely, your, your plating action or your planning and zoning action is going to come before the core permit, and then you go to the core permit and you say, "I've got it, I've got it, I've got to hurry up."
So you're saying that they have to have the core permit before it comes for us?
No.
Oh, okay.
No. Well, that's what this is saying, and what we're saying, no, it should stay the same as it is now.
It shouldn't be shell-grant, is that saying we're going to grant, I mean, shell?
May grant.
May grant?
Yes. Yes, it should be May.
So what we're trying to say is, we could grant conditional pardon, the Fed's doing... So what we're trying to say is, we could grant conditional upon the fed storm yet. Right. Okay, has there been a discussion?
Dan?
The problem with it is, it says the decision-making body shall grant final approval. What if they don't meet some of the standards?
Right, that's why we're going to change it to May. May grant final, may grant.
Yeah, okay, or shell grant when all conditions are met or something.
Right, right, right.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next change is on the top of page 285, is to do B4BII. And the 100 feet width should be changed to 50 feet. And that's really to be consistent with B4A1, which got changed to 25 feet. It used to be 50. So 50 feet on either side of the stream. We'll translate up to 50 feet.
Shouldn't you do four at the bottom, between 25 to 35 feet? Or not? Line eight.
What line?
It looks like it's eight, near the... Shall be within 25 to 35 feet of the edge of the corridor. If it's only 25 feet, the width is 20, a setback 25 feet from the edge of the corridor, what's 35 feet got to do in it? You're outside of the 25.
Within 25 feet of the edge of the corridor. Yeah, got it.
Just a point of information, there's a lot of public comment regarding the stream setbacks and beyond the issue of a technical amendment. A lot of new information was provided by the public regarding the issue. Some of it with regard to the adopted comprehensive plan, with regard to stream setbacks, and some of it scientific. This is in the written comments available to you in Exhibit D, and we intend to provide an issue response on that.
Okay, thank you.
Stacy, you want to...
Yeah, I did. I mean, 19 for 23. If you guys could look at that and tell me if they're not asking for yet another 15 feet setback from additional. And I'm on page 11, it's 19 for 23, C2. To me, it reads as if they're asking for yet another 15 feet of setback on the stream, additional.
No, they're talking about any...
Was that on top of the 25? I didn't quite understand it, I was just curious if you guys could...
Building accessory structures, fill another storage material in parking lots that will be set back at least a few...
Fills? Yeah, I think we did go over that. Because basically now wetlands just got bigger. They don't want you doing any work around 15.
I don't think it's addition. I don't think it's additional, I think it says 15. Because it's identifying as all buildings, accessory structures, and fill.
And fill, they couldn't put yard in there.
So you've got 25, let's say it does go down to 25 feet, then you're still going to add another 15 feet, so now you're at 40 feet.
From the delineated edge, yes.
The first setback is from a stream, and the second setback is from a wetland. So they're different.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So I was doing that wrong.
Okay.
So, can I continue on that? We've got 50 feet, okay? And now what this says, and I'm reading more on 4A2, where it's talking drainage way and then feral channel. We've got 50 feet, and what this says is beyond the 50 feet, we've got 10-foot setback to any building's accessory structures and parking lots. Am I reading that correctly?
Not from the same type of water body, the...
No, I agree with that, Tom. I'm on a stream now, basically, a drainage way. And I'm reading 4A2. What I interpret that is, we've got 50 feet for the stream, irrespective if the stream is one foot wide, it's still 50 foot, and then there's additional 10.
Actually, I think the ephemeral drain, excuse me, ephemeral channels and drainage ways, that's actually something different. So it's a 10-foot setback from that particular type of stream. And so you don't have 10 feet on top of the 50-foot setback area, whatever the setback from the stream is. Say, the city has a 25 setback, 25-foot setback from a stream, that's from the stream. This ephemeral channel and drainage way is something else, really, and it only has a 10-foot setback.
Well, it says an additional setback. It says additional setback is necessary to provide groundwater.
Couple of drawings here may answer a lot of confusion.
Well, I'm reading two, can I say something? I'm reading C2, and it says that no structures, fills, and other storage materials and parking lots shall be set back at least 15 feet horizontally from the delineated edge of the Class A wetlands and B and C that are unbuildable. So now, before, you could build up to the edge, or just get the edge.
The current setback in the code from the edge of wetlands is 15 feet. So this is consistent with what's in the current code.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up. I apologize.
Okay, all right, good.
Connie, can I ask a question? B is an alternative setback, like if they relocate Chester Creek, is that what it's supposed to be about? Because you're creating a corridor, right? Okay, so it's not when Chester Creek runs down or Campbell, as it runs in its course, it's when something is done to change it, like taking it off manorizer's property and moving it to the south. Okay. So then when you do that, you set a width. And then you set 25 feet off of that, off of the edge of the corridor. Correct. For your setback of your development stuff, just like you would if it were a regular stream. Okay, thanks, I got it.
What happens if municipal wetland plan designate something as a wetland, but Corps of Engineers gives you a determination that it's a wetland? I don't know the answer to that.
I think I need to answer the form.
The form is jurisdiction, so if a site is not a wetland, that's how we would actually...
Yeah, I think that supersedes, that decision supersedes the minuscule.
I can tell you this, it's on the map, it's really tough to get it off the map. I mean, almost impossible.
And there's three different federal agencies that classify wetlands in three different ways.
Right, it's all done by picture from 30,000.
Brilliant.
Which is really tough. They don't get out and walk it.
Which is why you have to hire a private surveyor and wetlands to go out and walk it.
It's isolated, then you're...
Right. And make a use of it for to get your approval. What happened over there?
She was trying to make a buck.
Okay, all right, next.
Well, before we go to the...
Way more fun at the library.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Before we go to 290, let's stop at 289. A, H, A, I, I. Yeah, 289, sorry. And, well, actually, this whole section, I believe we talked about today. The concern was that there is an Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan, and that is going to control, and so all these references to it, some of them are not, some of the provisions are not in the Wetlands Management Plan. In particular, a lot of two on the B wetlands is not in there. So the thought was just to leave in the very first sentence and delete all these references to just zoning and plating actions taken under this title should be consistent with the Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan. And not have all these other standards because you avoid the possibility of inconsistency between the Wetlands Management Plan and what's stated here. And if there's a change in the Wetlands Management Plan, and it doesn't get adopted here, it could create a problem.
Now, are we going to do the Wetlands Plan later on this year?
Obviously. So we're deleting everything. It's just going to be zoning and plating actions taken under this title should be consistent with the Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan.
And then you get rid of everything else. Let's just repeat it, and just take it from here. Do you keep B?
We left...
You're remaining 27.
So E becomes your new A? Yeah, it should come, it's still B.
We just got rid of the I's.
Look at you.
Okay, page 290, development purpose section. The proposal is to eliminate E and F, primarily because with respect to E, the concept is already included under D. And with respect to F, it would limit development and affect affordability of housing adverse rate. And then, while we're still on this, then H would be amended to provide, encourage retention of vegetation that helps retain runoff and maintains the area's visual character.
I'm good with that.
Okay, keep going. Yep, keep going.
C2A, it talks about a lot with an average slope of 20%. We want to change that to 30%. That would provide consistency with the comments that we had in Chapter 8.
This was one that was of concern to Debbie Osander because of the developments they're having in Eagle River and old excavated areas, gravel pits and so on, where they have man-made slopes of that. And it's not meant to be alpine and steep slopes like what was intended here, but without the classification, which says could raise concerns. It's one of the amendments that she was seeking. So I don't know how you address it, but I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Could we address that in her, in that you got Eagle River chapter?
You could, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a note when I talk to her next, talk about Chapter 10.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other, any comments on that? Okay, C3C2, which is the site, the size of the site disturbance envelope. And this, we had a lot of discussion in a prior work session on these and concerns that could you put in septic systems given these parameters? And the thought was to not have differentiations between the various sizes of the lots, but rather to go with a percentage and be consistent based on that percentage. And the percentage that was proposed was 70%.
What is it now, 60?
Well, 60%, lots less than 40,000 square feet, 60% of the lot area maximum, 20,000 square feet, it is pretty inconsistent. Mr. Bolles, do you have any comment regarding this particular issue?
As respect septic systems, you can take a lot of air because you have to step them down.
Right.
And given that you need an original and a reserve site, you need to be able to prove that you use that, which means more testing, and sometimes that means clearing out previous stuff.
Okay. So you're in favor, you think 70% works? Is that a good pass?
I agree, because there was a consensus for it. That's what I mean. I was told there's a consensus.
We'll be looking at this from the standpoint of the comprehensive plan, and as well as the other public comments, and checking back to see what is the history behind the 60% and how that was developed. However, I think the hillside district plan does have a fair amount to say about steep slope development, so we'll be providing that. I'm not sure, 70 or 60.
The next one is C3CII, still on page 291. And that is to delete the requirement for temporary construction fencing. That is also discussed in one of the prior work sessions, the concern is toward the cost associated with putting up that fencing.
And in addition, I might say, it should be removed after the final certificate of zoning compliance is issued. I mean, we have lots of conditional certificates of zoning compliance because of our implement weather and that sort of thing. We have residences that move into their new home, and they probably don't want to be surrounded by orange fencing.
Well, I agree, but there is also use for that fencing. And that is, for instance, on the hillside, when you have the wind, it catches all the trash that gets blown up at the construction site, and doesn't go into the neighbor's property, which is a big deal.
I could hire someone to pick up that trash a lot cheaper than I could install that fence.
But other builders couldn't.
Or won't.
Or won't. I see it all the time up there.
My issue is trying to get a final certificate of zoning with the fence up there, that's a loop. You will not issue you a conditional to remove the fence, and, you know, it's not the fencing, it's just trying to get a final certificate with the fencing there, I know what's going to happen, just in case.
What is the cost a foot?
I think the fence is uglier than the garbage.
Yeah, I think so, too. Jim, what are you seeing for cost of a foot for temporary fencing?
Depends on what you're putting up. You know, if you're putting up, you know, I've seen conditions where we had to put up six-foot chain link fence as temporary fencing. That's pretty spendy stuff.
Oh, yeah, that is.
I've seen other conditions where we're just putting up orange construction fencing to delineate the areas, and that's pretty cheap. You can put that in for a couple thousand bucks.
It only has to cost a house, though.
It does.
Yeah?
Is that...
That's the appliance that...
Is that fencing primarily for safety, to keep kids or people out?
The fencing is for the operators. Operators are not real good, Dana.
Dana. Well, evolve when they work.
Yeah. And again, we flag stuff for clearing all the time, and it's got the little flag in there. And it's my experience, if you put up fencing, they don't go into the areas that are supposed to be preserved.
Right. And you're not putting it up around all the property line, either.
It's really just establishing the clearing limits, and I would agree with Jim's experience. I've gone out of my way with flagging and had a five-stem beautiful birch tree and flagged it as the clearing limits and don't cut anything that's flagged.
It becomes a target.
They cut four of the five-stem blocks.
Was that to Hotten?
No. It was actually UAA Housing. So if it can be done, they will do it. So the orange fencing has really been kind of a standard to avoid the cost of chain links and go with the orange construction fencing.
I think, you know, again, come back, I think fencing for a development is a good idea, fencing for individual lots is probably too much.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
Fencing, having fencing for open space for development is probably a reasonable requirement, but on individual lots, if you're doing those, I don't think it's reasonable.
I would say the exact opposite of that, okay? That it's more appropriate for, on an individual lot, say you have an acre and a half lot, and so you, if you're gonna fence, you fence off that area that is gonna be excavated for your house. But are you telling, I think, we would have to fence all the open space areas where you're putting in roads, for example?
Adjacent to a road.
Adjacent to a road, you'd like to do that.
What is the difference between construction fencing and silt fencing?
I understand the difference, most of that's waddles now.
Can't we go substitute accountability for fencing, or is this out of the question, or what? I mean, if I'm doing one and I wanna do fencing, I should be able to do it. If I wanna pay attention and save a few bucks, why can I not?
Well, when you pull your Plan one, Plan two, or Plan three for your stormwater plan for pulling your permit, it tells you you have to have silt fencing at least. So, I don't know, but we don't wanna govern Title, we can't govern Title twenty-three that would say it needs to also include some type of a construction barrier too as part of that, not wouldn't fall under stormwater then. Because I wanna make it part of the whole system.
Hey, what's gonna get solved out of this? By requiring fencing?
Well...
Madam Chair.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's time to adjourn.
Fair weather.
We're gonna vote, we're gonna vote. Later, we're gonna vote. There are several things that we're gonna have to vote on, and this'll be one of them. We'll vote on it. We could define temporary fencing. We could.
Do we have to go home? We have to go home?
I wanna thank you guys. Just as a concerned citizen, seeing you guys operate like this as opposed at the library is a lot better.
Thank you, seriously. Like, when I came to the library and I saw you guys all up in one line, it was like here, I mean, you're even laughing. It's amazing. You're people here, exactly.
If this is long enough, for a simple, we'll be in white coats.
One day in a minute.
Are you talking about straitjackets? Yeah, we'll be in white coats like this, and we'll be laughing. Very well done.
And five.
We're in trouble when they have padding behind our seats, you know we're in trouble. Finish seven. Are we starting off with fencing?
When you look at the existing amendments, the size of private open space.
This is in seven or five?
It's in seven, yes, it's set of amendments. You need to look at existing code or the existing...